Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. Before we get started, I'd just call on Planning Board member, Mr. Jesse Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In advance of tonight's meeting, I participated in an online petition and posted comment online in something that was, it was an online petition pertinent to tonight's agenda items, acting as a private citizen. So after having a discussion with the state ethics attorney of the day, in the interest of preventing the appearance of impartiality or an inability to be objective as a planning board member, I'm going to recuse myself from the agenda items tonight. But I do reserve the right to vote as a private citizen on these matters at town meeting. And in going forward in future, Mr. Chairman, I assure you and the public that I will be checking with the state ethics attorney of the day before committing to myself in public, one way or the other, on any matters that may come before the planning board in the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stein. Before I read the, first item on the agenda is the public hearings. Before I read the public hearing notice, there were a lot of people here prepared for tonight's meeting, and I had the key to the building, so I had to, and I forgot it, so I had to go back home. We still got in here on time, but it wasn't enough time to set up. So we're running a little bit late, and I apologize for that. The other thing is, there was a zoning board of appeals meeting the other night, and I heard today that there were some very negative things that happened after that meeting. There was some control issues here in the hearing room, and then outside, there were more negative things that happened that are completely unacceptable and completely outside of the way we operate in the town of Southborough as citizens and neighbors. I expect that this hearing be, will be conducted in an orderly and polite and respectful manner. We've had very rare instances where we've had to be interrupted and change the direction of the meeting, but we have done it, including calling the constable. And I'm not afraid to do that tonight. So I expect everyone to behave properly and treat each other with respect. Is there anyone here in the room that does not understand what I just said? So I welcome you. First item on the agenda is seven o'clock, public hearing, citizens' petition number one, to amend the medical marijuana bylaw to change the distance from schools, recreational facilities, or daycare centers. Now, that's a seven o'clock hearing. At 7:15, there's petition number two, and at 7:30, there's petition number three. I intend to read the public, the notice of the public hearing for all three at the beginning. By the time I get through reading it, the first two will be, it'll be past 7:15. And then any questions regarding the citizens' petition number three, we'll have to hold off on discussing that until 7:30, which is in about 15 minutes. This is a notice of public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 28, 2016, beginning at 7:00 PM in Thomas McCallum Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse, 17 Common Streets, Southborough, Mass., to review proposed citizens' petition of amendments to the zoning bylaw of the Town of Southborough as follows, 7:00 PM, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter zoning of the code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts by adjusting the following. First, in 174-9J2A3, amend subsection as follows. Three, a registered marijuana dispensary and/or cultivation activities shall only be located, one, on property that borders Route 9, two, not less than 1,000 linear feet from a property line of a school, recreational facility, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate. See definitions in 174-9J2C below. Located in the Town of Southborough, and three, not less than 100 linear feet from a property line of a residence located in the Town of Southborough. The required distances shall be measured from all property lines of the proposed facility. 7:15 PM, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter zoning of the code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts by adding the following. In 174-9J1, add subsections E and F as follows. E, if the Massachusetts Department of Public Health cancels, revokes, or renews the certificate of registration for the registered marijuana dispensary, the special permit shall immediately become void. And F, nothing in this 174-9J shall be construed to authorize operations in the town of a recreational marijuana dispensary, or do any, or do or act anything in relation thereto. And now, this is for the number three, which is, that public hearing is scheduled for 7:30, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter zoning of the code of the Town of Southborough, Massachusetts by adding the following. In section 174-9J2A3, amend subsection as follows. 174-9J2A7, add subsection seven as follows. Seven, a registered marijuana dispensary shall operate only Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM, or will dispense marijuana only by appointment, or do or act anything in relation thereto. A copy of the citizens' petition can be viewed in the planning office, Townhouse, 17 Common Streets, Southborough, and the Southborough Public Library, 25 Main Street, Southborough. A copy of the proposed citizens' petition is electronically available on the Town of Southborough website, southboroughtown.com, planning board page. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed changes to the existing zoning bylaws should appear at the time and place designated, and that's signed by myself, Chairman, Southborough Planning Board. In addition, the citizen petition documents are here on the table, if anybody wants to look, look them up, or take a look at them. So having, I also want to state that the planning board, for zoning articles, the planning board is the authority that holds the public hearing for zoning articles. It doesn't necessarily mean that the planning board is in favor of or against the article. We are the facilitators for the public hearing. We will try to manage the public hearing and listen to the proponents in their presentation, and hopefully, they'll be able to answer any of your questions. If there's procedural questions, that we may be able to answer. So with that, I'll turn it over to Marnie Houlihan. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. Although my name is listed as the proposer of these warrant articles, I represent 467 members of the community of Southborough who signed an online petition advocating that we change the laws and the bylaws in Southborough. Members of that community are here to support me tonight, and members are at home watching to support as well. So what I'd like to do is take you through the first article, number 37, the rationale for why we have proposed these bylaw changes for the Town of Southborough. So I just want to highlight this particular slide. So Mr. Morris, the chair, read the article, and so I've highlighted where we've proposed changes, and that is, section two, not less than 1,000 linear feet from property line of a school, recreation facility, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate. And we've added the words, "or any facility in which children commonly congregate." The third change is under three, not less than 100 linear feet from a property line of a residence. So the question here tonight that we propose is why 1,000 feet from a school? It's imperative for our community to protect our children. And we, as community parents, raising children, grandparents, we want to maintain a drug-free zone for our children and for our adults around our schools, and particularly the two schools that are located within 1,000 feet of Route 9, Neri Elementary in Trotter, at 53 Parkerville Road, and the New England Center for Children at 33 Turnpike Road. Our mission is to decrease diversion of medical marijuana. It's an edible that looks like yummy treats to our children, and I'll go into more detail on why that matters, and to reduce the likelihood of our children being injured by drivers operating under the influence of marijuana on surrounding streets near these schools. So the first point is to maintain a drug-free zone. So it's important to note that marijuana is illegal and classified by the federal government as a Schedule I substance. And the Schedule I substance definition is no currently accepted medical use in the U.S., a lack of accepted safety for use under medical supervision, and a high potential for abuse. I think it's an important note that although medical marijuana has been approved in many states in the country, it is still deemed an illegal drugs substance by the federal government. Under the federal government, all public and private elementary secondary schools are protected by the federal drug-free zone laws expressed in the Crime Control Act and the Controlled Substances Act. These drugs, these acts basically protect 1,000 linear feet from school property lines. And what happens within 1,000 feet is that the federal authorities have the ability to prosecute anybody who violates that 1,000-foot property at higher, there's a higher precedent, and there's higher thresholds for prosecution. Our schools invest thousands of dollars each year in educational programs, starting at the fifth grade, to educate our children about the dangers of drugs. Many of our children, our parents in the community have fifth graders who started through the DARE program that our Southborough Police Department supports. It is really counterintuitive to set up a dispensary so close to a school while we're teaching our children about the dangers of So there is evidence that medical marijuana is diverted, and it's important that I share the peer-reviewed data that supports this evidence. In one study, a diversion of medical marijuana was common even in a sample of adolescents who are not necessarily at high risk for marijuana use and diversion. It's important for me to share that most of the data that we have that I'm sharing tonight is from Colorado. Colorado was one of the first states with medical marijuana laws, and therefore, there's, one of the states that have the data to show the impact of medical marijuana on many different aspects. This particular study was conducted by Dr. Thurstone, and it, she basically showed that 18.2% of youths aged 15 to 19 that enter a primary care office, it was randomized, it wasn't selection bias, it was people, boys and girls entering a primary care office. They, 18% reported obtaining marijuana from someone with a medical marijuana card. 36% reported knowing someone with a medical marijuana card. And what was so fascinating in this particular study is that knowing someone with a medical marijuana registration was associated with a more favorable marijuana-related attitude and more frequent marijuana use. In another study produced in the Journal of American Academy of Child Adolescent Psychiatry by Solomonson-Sautel, peer-reviewed journal article published in 2012, studied 164 adolescents who were in a drug substance program. 121 of the 164 patients, 74% reported using medical marijuana that had been recommended for someone else. That's also known as diverted medical marijuana, and they reported this a median of 50 times. So it wasn't just one time that they reported this. It was a median of 50 times. In the study, adolescents who use medical marijuana began using marijuana regularly at a younger age, and showed more marijuana abuse and dependence and conduct disorder symptoms that adolescents who did not, and conduct disorder symptoms than adolescents who did not use medical marijuana. It's also important to note that in both of these studies, they indicate that the fear or the impact of having medical marijuana for adolescents is they felt that it's safer because it's medically dispensed. There is an attitude of more carelessness because it is safe. Why wouldn't we be able to use it? So this is such an important aspect, is that marijuana looks like treats to kids. These pictures were pulled off edibles that are presented and promoted in Brockton and Salem and Eyre. Eyre, I don't know how you say that, city, Eyre. So these, these look like candies. There's chocolate bars. Chocolate bars come in 10 milligrams. That's 10 servings. If a kid got a handle on a chocolate bar and ate the entire thing, they'd be in an emergency room. Hard candy, those look like Jolly Ranchers to me. They come in watermelon and cherry and apple and flavors that kids are attracted to. There are sugar cookies and brownies. And the point here is that edibles are enticing to our kids, and if marijuana is diverted, we don't want to take a chance by having a medical marijuana dispensary located within 1,000 feet of a school. So this is Colorado's K through 12 experience, and so this is just some recent data. Colorado teens engage in more risky behaviors, such as binge drinking and marijuana use compared to their peers nationwide. The mean ages for use of substances were 13.9 years old. These are the ages of the kids at Trotter Middle School. The rate of illicit drug use in the nation is about 9.8%. In Colorado, age 12 to 17, that's 13.2%. There is this perception that marijuana is a safe drug, and people can try it, they have access to it through diversion techniques, and we do not want that opportunity to be presented to our children 1,000 feet within the Trotter and Neri Elementary Schools or the NACC. Seattle. So every year, there's a national survey that's conducted, a youth risk behavior survey, and yes, Southborough participates. In 2013, Seattle stated that 39% of kids who use say that marijuana originally came from a dispensary. Some of them may have bought it, some of them may have gotten it from a friend with a marijuana authorization, some of them may have gotten it from a parent who uses marijuana medicinally. This is a question about diversion of medical marijuana. And as you see from the question in the Seattle, again, experience with medical marijuana use, 38% of the children have used marijuana from a dispensary, 24% are not sure where it came from. Those, those facts speak for Driving while high, it is increasing. In fact, in a National Highway Traffic Safety Administration study that was just recently published, although the data was from 2013, it was published February 6th, and we hear that drunk driving is decreasing, and that's great. A lot of efforts that have been taken for drunk driving has decreased, but unfortunately, medical marijuana and driving while under the influence of marijuana has increased. So the, point to the slide at the bottom, the use of marijuana daytime in the 2007 study was 7% in 2014, that's 11%. That's a 57% increase. Nighttime use, pretty similar, 8.6% 2007 and 12.6% in 2014. The drug with the largest increase was marijuana. People are driving while under the influence. My question to the board, do we want them driving under the influence around our schools? 1,000 feet within our schools? Colorado data reinforces driving concerns. So there are two studies, again, peer-reviewed journal articles. A June 2013 Colorado car accident study published, specific to accident, in accident analysis and prevention, revealed an increase in traffic fatalities involving -- revealed an increase in traffic fatalities involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana. So it's well-known that marijuana use increases lane weaving, decreases mean speed, increases mean and variability in headways, impairs cognitive function, critical tracking tests, reaction times, divided attention task, expected practice effects, and lane position variability. Do we want people driving under the influence, who is well-known and documented what happens when you're driving under medical marijuana, driving in the streets that surround our schools, 1,000 feet within Trotter and Neri, or the NEC? Because drivers involved in fatal motor car crashes were almost two times more likely to be positive for marijuana than drivers that weren't involved in a fatal car crash. So interestingly enough, is we just don't know a lot right now. We know that kids are getting access to medical marijuana. We know Massachusetts is very restrictive about prescribing to youth. But what we don't know is the impact of medical marijuana on adolescents. The American Psychiatry Association showed that adolescents are perceiving marijuana as safe because of medical marijuana. Because they see that it's approved and it's accepted, it's a safer product to use. And recreational approvals across some states lowers the threshold even more. Adolescent brains are not fully developed. So exposure to THC, AKA marijuana, may have lasting damaging effects, such as lowering the IQ. Exposure to THC has the potential to exacerbate underlying mental illness, mood disorders, or psychotic episodes. Those kids that are depressed or have an opportunity to have one trigger, access to medical marijuana through diversion techniques can take them over the edge. Exposures to the high doses of THC in these edibles has the medical community very alarmed. And Colorado is actually now looking to ban edibles. So 1,000 feet poses high risk to school kids. So in front of you is the 1,000-foot perimeter and the impacted properties on Route 9 that are fall within the 1,000 feet. So what's interesting here is that as you are on Route 9, drivers have the option to proceed straight or turn right. So they can proceed straight. If they miss the turn to get into any of these properties that are located here, if those were to be approved, they would, GPS would send them down Deerfoot Road, which is a road that, within almost 200 feet, has congregating children at a bus stop at Kenley and Deerfoot. If you can travel a little bit farther, all the green stars indicate the school bus stops. The blue hexagons on the pathways on Deerfoot and Clifford indicate walkways down to the street. Kids actually do walk to school today. I know it might be hard to believe, but I live on Clifford and my kids walk to school. And in traffic, and, sorry, winter, they walk on the street. They walk on the street in the summertime. They're out there, and those kids are walking. They're at their bus stops or they're walking to school. We do not want to give an opportunity for drivers either missing their spot and traveling through our neighborhoods or leaving a dispensary and traveling through our neighborhoods, to have an option to hit or injure any of our kids. Our job is to protect our children. Clifford and Deerfoot are also used as training routes for Trotter School Track practices and St. Mark's Athletics. So there's just a large group of congregating children all the time on these streets. We just can't take the risk. The New England Center for Children. So Willow, as you know, those who travel it, is a very narrow, windy road that people use to cut through onto Route 9. And so having access into Route 9 through Willow, passing by another school, and the properties that are within the 1,000 feet are covered in the picture there as well, we really need to just protect our children and not increase traffic flow or have an opportunity for people driving under the influence to injure any of our children. So this is data that I actually collected this morning. So these are published reports of patients per day. So we know that dispensaries are drawing a lot of non-local drivers. And so that's another challenge, is we have people that aren't familiar with the streets. And we put a dispensary 1,000 feet with a school, that's a challenge for us to manage these local drivers. It really just takes one incident. It's going to take that one child being injured near 1,000 feet of our school. So interestingly enough, is we don't know how many patients are expected each day. But here's some examples. In Northampton, they have 150 to 200 patients per day. In Brockton, they had 150 in the first three hours. In Brookline, they had 125 in the first day. Lowell reports 60 patients in the first day. And those are patients, the quote on Lowell is "most of the people who came live probably within a 25-mile radius of here, and they are so happy they have a facility because they don't have to drive hours to get it." So why 1,000 feet from school? We want to expand the proximity to schools. We want to increase barriers of access to divert medical marijuana. We want to shift traffic patterns away from streets within close proximity to schools that are heavily accessed by kids, walking to schools, and congregating children to eliminate any potential for harm. The sole function of the dispensary is to trade cash for drugs, making it a likely target for criminal activities. And it is imperative that we increase the buffer between our school and any potential criminal activity. So why 100 feet from residential properties? That's the other part of Article Number 37. Just to note, marijuana, again, is an illegal drug at the federal level. So the federal government restricts business to cash only. No credit cards, no checks, cash only. Cash, large volumes of cash, and illegal drugs bring crime. Southborough has already been the target of liquor store robberies, gas station robberies, and home burglaries. Residents should not be in fear that their home abuts an invitation to criminals. And when you purchased a home in Southborough, did you sign up to have a registered marijuana dispensary as your neighbor? So one, as we are in front of the planning board, I thought it was very important to bring up how our neighboring towns zone for RMD. So as I looked at our neighboring towns, it's important to note that many have the 500 feet. However, they've specifically zoned in places where education facilities and areas of congregating children do not exist. So although it says 500 feet, when you look at their specific zoning, there's no area that abuts residential or educational zones. And then there are other towns that took very broad sweeps. Hudson, 2,000 feet from a school, 300 feet from a residence. Marlboro, 1,000 feet, and they put it in an industrial and small section on Maple Street. So our neighboring towns have agreed that a proximity to schools is not allowed. It should not happen. And they've put it in their bylaws by either specifically zoning for RMDs in areas that do not contain educational facilities or homes. So too many unknowns, too many risks. So why do we take the chance? So I'm just going to reiterate a few points. Too close to our schools, too close to residents and their children. Gives the false perception to students that marijuana is safe to use. We have a high possibility for diversion that could result in serious lifelong consequence to our children with even just one exposure. We have too many unknowns around the dangers of a high cash drug business. It's simply not worth all the risk to the children of our community. Our job, this community's job, the 467 people supporting me tonight, our job is to protect our children. My last request, this is the closing of Article 37, is I would like to ask the board if they would be voting in favor on town meeting. You are specifically asked to put a vote in support or not. And I would like to appeal to the board to vote to approve Article 37. Thank you.
We have a lot of different presentations before the board in a number of areas of zoning and even beyond that. And this has to be one of the most professional presentations and most professionally-delivered presentation that we've heard. So compliments on your presentation. You, Marty, you keep referring to Article 37, which this is. But there's actually, I have the town warrant here. It's on the website. And it's actually Article 37, 38, and 39.
Oh, I, sorry, I thought we had three separate public meetings. So that's why I was doing Article 37.
We can go on to the others.
Oh, okay.
Two and three now, because we're way past 7:30.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So.
Can I, I have four slides left.
Oh, no, plenty. This is, if that was Article 37, we still have 38 and 39 to go. Thank you.
I apologize, thank you.
Go ahead.
So Article 38, again, Chairman Morris read through this. So, next slide, please. So really, the rationale for this is that most Massachusetts bylaws have this specific statement pertaining to subsection E, which is default language pertaining to the Department of Public Health's decision to cancel, revoke, or non-renew to assure Southborough bylaws in compliance with state guidance. It is really just a matter of kind of legal ease that we have this in the warrant article as a protective function. I don't think there's any specific, any more rationale that I can provide. And subsection F is fairly straightforward, that if we do have a medical marijuana dispensary, it's specific to a medical marijuana dispensary, that this bylaw basically says that it's not to be intended or for use for recreation. So that's Article Number 38. And then Article 39 is to have specific hours that are restricted. And so it's in within our right as a town to restrict the retail hours of a medical marijuana dispensary. And so we felt as a community that if we are going to support a medical marijuana dispensary outside the 1,000-foot perimeter and 100-foot residence, that we would like to restrict those dispensing hours to when our kids are actually in school. So if people are coming in, it's not at a time when the kids are on the streets and available and congregating children. The business model as well, for most RMDs approved to date, is to provide home delivery service. And nothing in this bylaw would impact that home delivery service. So this is just the retail store hours that we're proposing to restrict. Most neighboring town bylaws have allowed for seven days of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Our point here is this is just an unknown about how these will work. We only have eight months' experience in Massachusetts with this. We don't know what it will mean. We don't know how many resources it will draw on public for fire, for police. So why not be smart about restricting retail hours about that? So in this warrant article, we've asked to restrict the hours to school hours or by appointment only. And that really, medical marijuana is not a typical retail store. So we really should govern and use our democratic rights to protect the citizens of Southborough. And so my conclusion here is there's too many unknowns, too many risks. So why do we take the chance? We don't want to be too close to our schools. We don't want to be close to our residents. We don't want to give the false perception to our students that marijuana is safe to use. There's a high possibility for diversion that could result in serious lifelong consequences to our children with even just one exposure, one kid. Too many unknowns around the dangers of high cash drug business. And it's simply not worth all the risk to our children of our community. Our number-one job, I speak for myself and the 467 people who signed that petition, we protect our children, and that's why we're here with our citizens petition. Thank you.
That covers the three articles.
Thanks.
Thank you. What I'll do is, I know you've asked the board to vote on this. We want to open it up to the neighbors and the public first, if there's any questions or comments. And then we'll hear from the planning board, if that's okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir, you need to get a microphone.
Thank you. My name is Thasheng Wang, living at 16 Sadie Hart Lane. So first, I would like compliment to Marty. It's really a great job. So I have done a little research on this setback. So in a way, it's a common sense. So marijuana has just recently become medical use legalized, and lots of uncertainties and the impact to health and to community. So therefore, the 500-feet setback is really, in my view, from the common sense, it's really too close. And as Marty explained for neighboring towns, and I also did a couple of other states. So Arizona, Pineville County, they require 1,500 feet setback from any school or Trojan congregation area, and 200 feet from any residential property. And Jackson County, Oregon, requires 250 feet setback from residential zoned area, and 1,000 feet from any schools or Trojan congregation activity area. So our neighbors, seems like Hudson and Marlboro, requires even much more. So the 100 feet, I even feel is too close. So given all the facts, Marty just quoted the impact and possibility. So, and I also support the hours should restrict to the hours that no kids were wandering the school or after-school hours because that seems like it will expose the kids to a much bigger danger. So for those uncertainties. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Yes. Were you just stretching? That means you still have to speak. You can't stretch and not speak. Anyone else?
So my name is Shun Lee, and I live in 12 Jocelyn Lane. This past Sunday, we were playing soccer. I took my kids to play soccer, and this, we're talking about the town events, and the medical marijuana come up. And my kids come to me and just said, "I'm scared." She went to Neri, and I look at the map. The dispensary is one house away from the Neri school. And during, you know, when the kids go to playground in the wintertime, I think they can really see the dispensary. And the kids do talk to each other. If they know there's dispensary, then other kids will know. And I look at the books that my kids are reading. Now the book's saying good things about marijuana, frankly. I haven't seen any book saying, "Take some, you know, they're good." So I can understand why she's not happy about it, and she's scared. She doesn't really know about it. So I promised her that I'll come here and speak on her behalf. Thank you.
Mrs. Mugrich?
I was expecting the board to read this into the record. So this is a communication that I sent to the planning board a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure of the exact date. This is a copy that was sent on March 24th. But actually, it was sent on March 17th. So please see the attached as suggestions to the Medical Marijuana Zoning Bylaw. I will try to make it to the public hearing. Regardless, please share this with other members of the planning board. Here is my letter, which I wanted to be read into the record. Let me just preface it to say that I'm not sure whether this is appropriate to these particular warrant articles or not, but for the consideration. So here's my letter. "To the members of the planning board and other interested citizens of Southborough, I am writing in regards to the town's zoning bylaw, Chapter 174, which pertains to registered marijuana dispensaries. I feel that the bylaw was vetted quite a bit during the process that led up to its being passed at annual town meeting last year. There were multiple meetings and public hearings that took place prior to town meeting, and many changes to the bylaw were made during that process. I am comfortable with the way it is written, with possibly one exception. I think the addition of verbiage that adds something limiting the proximity of dispensaries to one another might be wise." Boston recently addressed this. Boston recently addressed this issue, originally proposing a one-mile distance between RMDs, and then settling on one-half mile earlier this month. The goal of this is to avoid having a cluster of dispensaries in any one location or neighborhood. I think this is wise. I will attach the legislation proposed by Councilor Flaherty to the Boston City, to the City of Boston. Due to the suburban nature of Southborough, I would suggest that the town adopt a one-mile sighting distance from any other existing dispensary. I would think that adopting the language used in Boston's legislation could be done. As always, the reality of this becoming an issue here in town is most likely remote, but so is the thought of one ever being sighted here in the first place. Better to be proactive than reactive. Please let me know if I can be of any assistance in following up on this. I would be happy to help. To note, I am a member of the Advisory Committee, but I'm writing this as an individual and as a reflection of my own beliefs. Respectfully, Karen Muggerich." And I attached the order to the City of Boston, the legislation order regarding a text amendment to the Boston zoning code for marijuana dispensaries, which you can add into the record, and you all should have a copy of. So I don't think I need to read that.
Thank you. Marnie, do you have that?
I don't. Thank you.
There's extra copies right here.
Thanks.
If you want them. Extra copies.
Can I just make a comment? Or is it too late?
It's a public hearing.
Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford. I just want to make a statement. I know Karen has repeatedly stated in multiple meetings about the process that occurred prior to now about the zoning bylaws. I think it's really important to note that of those 467 people that sign that petition, most people have not attended town meeting, ever. So these people are new to town government. They are new to the process. And I think we have a whole new voice of people that are, want to be heard, and that's why the citizens petition has come out, is because it wasn't resolved in the multiple meetings and the previous town meeting. And so the 467 people want you to consider their voice now. Thank you.
Thanks for submitting that. I know you asked me to read it, but I don't, I don't think, we usually read things if the person is here, so thank you for showing up. We also received a letter dated March 23rd, 2016, from the Economic Development Committee. Is there anyone here from the Economic Development Committee? It's kind of a, it's a two-page letter. It's a little bit long, but I guess we have time. Does anybody object if I read it? "Dear Selectmen and Members of the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Health, the Economic Development Committee has observed with interest the recent debate in our town with respect to the marijuana dispensary proposed at 255 Turnpike Road and the proposed marijuana bylaw revisions. We take this opportunity to share with you our concerns and opposition to this project in particular, and our support for the proposed bylaw revisions in the town meeting warrant articles. At a public meeting on March 22nd, 2016, the EDC discussed these issues at length and voted unanimously to oppose the issuance of a special permit for a marijuana dispensary at 255 Turnpike Road. The EDC voted five to one to support warrant articles 37, 38, and 39 to amend the Marijuana Dispensary Bylaw 174-9J. The mission of the EDC is to grow the commercial and industrial tax base to stabilize residential taxes while preserving the character and charm of Southborough. While economic development and the growth of the commercial and industrial base is the hallmark of economic development organizations generally, the EDC takes the last phrase in its mission statement just as seriously, preserving Southborough's character and charm. Not every business venture that supplements our commercial tax base is appropriate for Southborough at every location. The residents of Southborough choose to live here because of the unique, family-oriented character of our town that distinguishes it from many of the larger communities in our region. Our thriving business community, with an emphasis on technology, healthcare, and nonprofit education, along with hundreds of small family companies and DBAs, support and enhance Southborough's local economy and its unique community and character. It is critical to our long-term success that we retain and attract businesses that are in keeping with Southborough's character and charm. It is for this reason that the EDC opposes the proposed marijuana dispensary at 255 Turnpike Road. It is not for the EDC to question the wisdom of the voters who approve the medical marijuana referendum. Commonwealth's regulations, however, recognize that marijuana dispensaries must be appropriately located and cited to avoid damaging consequences to a community. Even the Commonwealth's baseline regulations restrict, for example, how close a dispensary can be to a school. These considerations are among those that caused the EDC to oppose this particular project at the proposed location. Other locations within the permissible area for a marijuana dispensary under the existing zoning bylaw or the proposed bylaw revisions would be far more appropriate for this use. First, the proposed 255 Turnpike Road site directly abuts residential homes on Clifford Street. Regardless of one's personal opinion for or against marijuana dispensaries, one cannot dispute the underlying controversy and the stigma associated with such a facility in the eyes of some members of the public. The residents of Clifford Street and the surrounding neighborhood cannot fairly be asked to endure the burden, detriment, offense, and devaluation of their property that would ensure, in our view, from being forced to host a marijuana dispensary so close to their homes and neighborhood. These facts require a denial of any requested special permit for the project under the special permit standard set forth in 174-9 of the zoning bylaw. Second, the 255 Turnpike Road site proposal is close to the Neary and Trotter School's. Federal law provides for enhanced criminal penalties for illegal drug activity within 1,000 feet of the school zone. In our view, citing a marijuana dispensary 630 feet from two elementary schools is substantially detrimental and offensive to our students' residents and reflects poorly on the values Southborough represents as a town that prioritizes community, education, and family. Finally, and of critical concern to the EDC, citing a dispensary at 255 Turnpike Road in the heart of our office and business corridor, in our view undermines our efforts to attract and retain the technology, healthcare, and professional services businesses that are the backbone of Southborough's thriving commercial sector. Whether we choose to admit it or not, some companies will be reluctant to locate in the vicinity of a marijuana dispensary, resulting in increased commercial vacancies, declining commercial and residential real estate values, and generally undermining the economic vitality of our primary commercial thoroughfare. For the same reasons, the EDC also encourages you to support the marijuana bylaw amendments on the Springtown Meeting warrant. Thank you for your consideration, and please do not hesitate to contact me if I can provide further information or input. Very truly yours, David McKay, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee." This letter refers to, this was dated before the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, hearing on that special permit. Is that correct? Could you, would you comment, were you able to comment on what happened relative to the zoning board?
The zoning board voted in support of the RMD applicant, four to one. So they approved the special permit.
That's my understanding also, which then, I think, allows the proponent to submit a site plan to the planning board for its review. We have not received that, as far as I know. So I see there's a few town officials here. Are there any town officials that would like to speak? Questions or comments? Open it up to the planning board. Mr. Jenks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could, could we put Slide 10 back? Oh, threw a monkey wrench at you. That's the map. It shows the...
The Neary and Trotter map?
Right. And does that show the 500-foot or the 1,000?
That's 1,000 feet. Again, I'm not an expert map maker, so that's by my eye. I've also given you, I had you each take this, which is a GIS map of all the properties that actually meet the new bylaw requirements.
I, I would assume your eyes are better than mine, even this close, but...
Hello.
The, this is...
That is the Neary School.
Okay, and Trotter then is outside of this?
Yeah, so I went to the 1,000 towards Route 9.
Okay.
So it is within 1,000 feet of Neary, but I just went towards the Route 9 perimeter, which is the available areas where an RMD could locate.
And can you stop me at the facility that's being talked about now?
Right there.
Okay. So really, this whole thing shifts up that way by this amount? If we're talking 1,000 feet?
That's 630 feet. That particular location is 630 feet.
Okay.
A thousand, is that, yes, is kind of the circle perimeter.
The percentage is purple, the center, so the 255, that's the 255?
No, no, 255 is near the Route 9, down where your finger was just at. And so what I've done is circled those properties, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 properties, would all be in with 1,000 feet and would not be subject to be available as an RMD if the bylaw were approved.
Okay.
Also because they abut residential properties.
Can you explain the logic of, of a certain distance, whether it be 500 or 1,000? Is it because of diversion concerns? So if we look at this facility, and are, are we concerned that students are going to make their way to this facility and stand out front like teenagers used to do sometimes, trying to get someone to buy them a six-pack of beer? Don't ask me how I know that. Is that the concern?
I mean, it could happen. The likelihood of that, probably not, but it's one of the things that could happen.
So then we're concerned about people from here driving up to there?
Yes.
So why does the distance matter if they're in a car?
So...
I mean, why can't it be a mile?
Well, if it's a mile, I think it might be a little bit more challenging to actually facilitate an opportunity for a medical marijuana dispensary to come into Southborough.
I think that's what I'm saying. So, so it's really people driving. So if the planning board in a, in a site plan review imposes a requirement, now we know they've got a, they're going to have a security person there. If we impose a requirement that, I don't know the timing, but let me say two minutes. You've got two minutes to get out the door and off the property. In other words, we don't want you sitting in your car opening the packages. If that's a requirement and there's security there to enforce it, is that a good thing?
Sure, it's a good thing, but it wouldn't help my bylaw. So I still believe that there's an opportunity for somebody to get in their car, turn the corner, park, take the medical marijuana, divert it down the street. So there's still an opportunity, no matter how fast you get them off that facility.
Okay, but that's their intent when they go get the marijuana, right? I mean, they don't just...
To divert it?
Yeah, they don't just decide, coming out the door, "I'm going to pull over here, open the package, and go find a school." They must, they must be thinking, "This is what I'm going to do."
I, yeah, and I don't know. I'm not in the mind of the medical marijuana diverter. So I think all options are available to somebody who has malicious intent.
Okay. Just turn this one around. Push the button and turn it around.
Erin Wheatley, 22 Clifford. So 1,000, shut it off, is, is really historical from the school drug-free zones that literally, just a tremendous amount of effort has gone in from the federal government, the chief of police. I mean, I can, I can provide documentation on why 1,000 feet was come up to create a drug-free zone environment for our schools in the United States. And it's been extremely successful, extremely successful at decreasing exposure of kids to drugs. And so, I mean, that's really what our ultimate goal here is that we have a tremendous number of children in this area. It's very densely populated with children, both residentially and at both of the schools. And so we're just trying to push back. Originally, it was going to be set for 1,000 feet. And that's where we want it, because we don't want an opportunity for diversion into the schools or access. And also the perception of the students having a medical marijuana dispensary, they really begin to feel like, "Oh, this is cool. This is safe." You know, people can get prescriptions to it, you know, maybe I'll give it a try. They have no understanding. I actually called the Brockton dispensary today, and I had a pretty long discussion about their edibles. And those Jolly Rancher candies come in multiple high concentration of THC. And I asked, "Well, how do you know what to use?" And they're like, "Well, you need to start with the very smallest, a fraction of the smallest amount first, until you really understand what the repercussions are." And, you know, how's someone going to know, once that candy's out of its wrapper? You know, and that's, so our goal is just to keep this stuff away from the students.
You're preaching to the choir on that one.
Well, I mean, that's where the 1,000 feet comes from.
Okay.
It comes from the federal guidelines.
So if 1,000's good, 1,500 would be better?
Perfectly, yes.
You talk about a cash business and therefore invites problems more than a bank does? I mean, we have cash businesses. Do we know that the aspect of being a cash business is more attractive in an RMD with a security guard?
So there's data I didn't present here in Colorado that actually showed that there's been a 50% increase in burglaries and robberies in Colorado associated with dispensaries. And the reason why it's more appealing than a bank is because it's got cash and illegal drugs. So there's an opportunity for kind of, you know, you get two bangs with your block, I guess.
Could that increase be attributable to the fact that they didn't have them before?
Yes, it is attributable in the study that I had cited. It's not in the data that I just reviewed tonight.
So you'd expect that result?
You would expect that result. And, and you just really don't know what that, we, we don't know, right? So we have eight months of data with six dispensaries in the state. We do not know. People can tell you that, that, you know, there's nothing to date. That's great. I don't know if that will continue. Our point to the planning board is why would we even take the risk? Why would we be the guinea pigs for this and put it so close to a school? So let's respect the federal 1,000-foot drug-free zone, and let's not... a school? So let's respect the federal thousand-foot drug-free zone, and let's not take that risk.
Mr. Chairman, have we done any analysis of what a thousand-foot barrier would leave for permissible locations?
Not that I'm aware of. But I think it would, it looks like something similar to that was done by the EDC, where they, they excluded 255 Turnpike Road and stated that there were many other locations within the current zone that allows these facilities to, to still support them. And since they supported the, the thousand feet that's being proposed, I put those two together, and it would seem that there are other locations within the current zone that would, that would support this. And I think that it would, if I remember right, the, the ZBA and, and I think the selectmen, maybe the selectmen more than the ZBA, asked the proponent to look at other facilities. And he, the proponent reported back that they said that they did. And I'll let them speak for themselves if they want, but apparently the answer, the answer, no, the planning board has not done any research on that. But it looks like recently, I mean, we, when we were putting these articles together a couple of years ago, there was considerable research on that. And if Mr. Samino wants to speak to that, he'll do it a lot better than I do. Do, is that, Mr. Samino?
I'm sorry, yeah, Paul Samino, Board of Select, but formerly Planning Board. I just wanted to remind you, Don, you already, you beat me to it. I don't know where it is today, but we GIS mapped a thousand feet two years ago when this bylaw was first being proposed. I assume that data is available somewhere. And, and it does, Phil, to your question, obviously, you know, give you a different picture than the 500-foot map. We, we had a buffer from certain, you know, protected uses, recreation, school, et cetera. I'm not sure if that aligns exactly with this proposed revision, but to give you an idea, DPW may still have it.
I, I recall a, I think, a thousand-foot barrier drawing when the proposal was to cite these in the industrial or industrial park zones. I don't recall it along Route 9, but you think it was?
I believe we did all, I believe we did all three. Yes.
All right, we should see if we can find that. Thank you.
Just a comment to that. So I did, again, I'm not an expert. I did a novice search by GIS by property, measuring the property lines in GIS, whether it was near 100-foot residence and 1,000. And I have a list of about 27 available properties. Again, I'm not an expert.
It, just as a comment, it seemed to me, your presentation was great. Seemed to me, a lot of it didn't pertain to now in Southborough. A lot of it was back when the state was proposing legalizing these facilities. And my, my last one is also a general comment. As, as sad as it is to, to answer the, I think it was in the EDC letter, that the, the people on Clifford Road should not have to bear the burden of this, makes me think back to when the town was looking for a new dump site. This, this wasn't transfer station, nothing fancy, this was a dump. And we were looking for a new dump site. And one of the big concerns at that time was, "Oh no, not in my neighborhood." And, and unfortunately, well, I'll put it the other way around. Fortunately, most people in town don't have to bear the burden of anything detrimental to the neighborhood. A lot do. I can remember when the fire station moved from where the pizza shop is now to the new facility, we had, they were using sirens on the roof of the building then, all night long. It was, it was a great place to be. So, thank you again for the presentation. I think it was very well done and, oh, turn the mic over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. Well done. Thank you for the presentation. My question on Article, let's see, 37, I believe it is, where you said, "Not less than a thousand linear feet from a property line of a school, recreation facility, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate." How would you define that? And has Town Council reviewed that? And I, I'm just wondering how you defend that, or, you know, just in, how the zoning officer would enforce that?
So if you were to look at most of the neighboring towns and their bylaw, it specifically states congregating children. And the definition is by the Department of Public Health. So it is actually pretty standard language, and Department of Public Health defines that. I do have the definition, I don't have it up on this presentation, but it is well documented, and it's a default recommendation to most towns to include in their bylaw.
Okay, I was just wondering how...
So I didn't need to define it specifically.
Okay, but so you, you're using it from the public health's point of view, not from a point of view of kids just gathering for a pickup game in the backyard?
Correct.
Okay. So are we, that was the only question I had on the presentation. Are we gonna discuss more later, I take it?
Oh, there's a couple of items I wanted to go over.
Okay.
But I'm, I think that I'm prepared to vote tonight, or listen to reasons why we can think about it. And we have another meeting next Monday, and then we also meet on the night of town meeting. So, there's a need for Article 20, I mean, 37, I think it's 37, to be amended. Correct?
37?
Is it 37?
Thirty-eight, 39 has the scripner's error.
Okay. So I just wanna say that that has the number seven in it.
Seven.
And there's currently no number six.
Correct.
So we would change the number seven to a number six. Is that the only change, Marty?
That is.
So I just wanna say that when this gets presented at, at the town meeting, someone's gonna get up and request an amendment. And for the people to know here and, and on, at home, that, that that particular one is, we already know that there's gonna have to be an amendment, and that the amendment is related to a number change rather than a, a substance change.
Correct.
And then, it's also 39. In, in Article 37, we talk about a distance, 1,000 feet. And distances are, measurements like that are throughout the zoning code in Southborough and every other city in town. So to, having your zoning code, a regulation of a distance is perfectly allowed. Article 38 refers to a change in, in the state, state law relative to the, the special permit here. That's, to me, that's separate. But 39 refers to hours of operation. And I believe that certainly through the zoning advisory committee, the years that I spent on that, that our consultant would advise against regulating hours of operation in the zoning code. Because if you wanted to change it, for example, the time here that we have is till 2:30. So if we thought that we wanted to change it to 2 o'clock, you'd have to bring this article before another town meeting to, to make that change from 2:30 to 2:00, or any minutes of changes. So normally, the hours of operation are regulated through the site plan approval, not through the zoning. So I think, and help me, if Town Council has rendered his opinion to us on that, I'd be surprised if it was something different. But because this is a little bit outside of, or new to zoning these facilities, I'm prepared to support, recommend support of that article with those hours of operation, if that's the way that this type of regulation is being done in other towns, that includes the time, which may be more critical than if it was a regular business. So, but I, I think that it may, it may come to a point where Town Council and maybe others would advise that that's not a good article and unnecessary, because it can be regulated through a site plan approval. It can still be covered, it just shouldn't be covered under zoning.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that one and be advised accordingly. Do, Phil or Andrew, did you, do you have any input on that?
No, I, I agree with that. I think that is right.
No, the only comment I had is, I believe that the ZBA actually put in specific hours as part of their conditions, wasn't it?
I have not seen their, their, anything filed on their decision, so I, I can't comment on that.
But that, your explanation makes great sense to me.
Yeah, my comments are, are related more to the zoning code rather than a special permit that might be granted by the ZBA or the, or the planning board.
I see.
So were there any other, yes, sir?
Again, Duchang Wang, 16 Sadie Hart Lane. So, Mr. Chairman or members, I have a little procedure questions about the situation. Because ZBA already approved the applicants on this project. So as we all know that, so we have the articles, the warrant, go into the town meeting, which will significantly change the setbacks, which means it will change in the whole situation, making the project approvable or not. So, say, taking an exam scenario, so if April 11th, we get the articles voted yes and approved by two-thirds of majority, so, and then they file a site plan review, how would the board vote on it or determine whether that project would be regulated under the previous version of the code or will, under the new code? Because it's, so I'm not very clear how that procedure can play, just, just from the procedure-wise. And so if, if we, if we can shed some lights for us to, to entertain what, what that means. Thank you.
It's a very good question or questions. I don't know, I don't know the answer. I know we've been talking about it within the planning department, and I haven't had a direct conversation with the Town Council as to how he would advise. Have, any, any comment, any help on this one from, between now and, and certainly between now and town meeting, we'll have to do, not just the planning board, but all of us would have to do some homework on that to make sure that the people know what they're voting on and what the impact is relative to the special permit that was just granted. There's not enough, I don't believe there's enough time for the site plan to be submitted to the planning board and to hold a public hearing before the town meeting. So I don't think that the planning board would be able to, or would act on any site plan submittal before town meeting, just because of the timing.
Thank you. You may answer my...
Wouldn't have to know, would have to know what, what our range of authority is.
Okay.
And would have to get that, I'm sure, from council.
So if I understand right, so the board definitely will not consider a site plan review application for the project before the town meeting? Is, is there time restriction or, so is that, so I'm just trying to understand. I think that's probably ease a little bit concern, because it looks like in, we have the Supreme Court, you know, judging situation there also have a debate. So they want to wait for the next president to make the, to make that determination. But I think, so applying to our situation here, we obviously see a very critical issue, and it's very matter to, to the well-being and welfare of our community. And so I would respectfully request the board to consider, at least to deter that, any application, since we already know that such articles under consideration. So, to, to, to be considered after the town meeting. That's at least, I feel we can do here. Thank, thank you so much.
Well, I'll get to you in one second, ma'am. Your, it's the way I said it at the beginning. The, if, if a, if a, an application for site plan approval was submitted to the, to the planning department, depending on the day of the week, then a public hearing notice has to be submitted to the newspaper. And that's usually the week before the hearing notice appears in the paper. That first hearing notice has to appear in the paper two weeks before the public hearing. And then it has to appear in the paper again, one week before the hearing. So if it was submitted today or tomorrow, it would be at least three weeks before the process could begin. And it's only two weeks to town meeting? So it, it can't, it cannot happen under the rules. But the second part of your question about delaying, we've been asked over the years to do those type of things, and the planning board normally would not consider that. We don't, we try not to delay for any reason. We press on with our, our responsibilities within the rules. Mr. Shea, Selectman Shea, good evening.
Brian Shea, 17 Pinecone Lane. So just a question. The other item on the agenda tonight, the dealing with 255 Turnpike Road, I'm just curious if that has any impact on the question that this gentleman raised.
Another good question. That's, that's this plan here. It's an approval-not-required plan, and it's submitted on, as a perimeter plan. I'm gonna read that, what the state call, refers to under an approval-not-required as a perimeter plan. And we'll get to that after we either continue the hearing or close the hearing. Ma'am, you wanted to speak?
Anastasia Smith, Warfare View Drive. We have the map with the child's, you know, spots where the children's centers are and the schools, as if that's fixed. In the future, another school may open somewhere, or child centers, and how does that conflict, is, how is that resolved if it's within, you know, if they're not compatible with the distance? Is it the school that is told that they're not, they're not allowed to come in, so that we're eliminating our possibility for future child and educational centers within our town, because we've chosen this route instead? And then we then block ourselves from things that would be beneficial for our children, that we'd like to see come in? That's one issue, not that I need to answer that, but to be considered, that that's something that would be movable, and we'd like that to grow in our town, and have that be not a conflict or block? a conflict or blocked. The other question is that I'm hearing about a thousand feet being a federal standard, as far as a minimum protection for our children. And that that's been effective, because zero was not a good answer, so a thousand is better. But we have a lovely town, and it seems that minimum might not be the favorite protection. Maybe we want to have a more than minimum as protection, and consider how far somebody can easily walk, either a child or somebody holding a packet of drugs. Thank you.
Marnie.
I just want to make a comment on that. So unfortunately, when I submitted the warrant article, there was a copy paste onto that warrant article, and there were a few words that were left off on that warrant article. Those words are, and act there with to, or something like that, the, the last four words on each warrant article. Unfortunately, because of that copy paste, it restricts us from changing the, the proposed linear feet on town meeting. We would need to rally another hundred voters, which I think would be easily done for a special town meeting, to be able to proceed with a different zoning bylaw with a larger perimeter. So at this time, the, the article cannot change, and it is as is.
Do you know the answer to the question about grandfathering? Do you know that, Paul? If, if a school or one of those facilities?
Yeah, it's not what I got up to speak to, but I, the answer is you can't, if these guys are lawfully in business, you can't effectively put them out of business by opening a daycare next door. It just doesn't work in that direction. You can open a daycare next door, but they are not going to have to leave, okay? That's just common sense when you think about it. I got up to speak to the point about a new distance. One of the things, and I'm speaking from my experience passing this article originally, I'm sorry, the, the bylaw originally, two years ago. When you actually map these distances, five hundred, a thousand, now fifteen hundred, it's not in the abstract. And some, lady just mentioned, we have a lovely town, right? We, we don't have that much in town in the first place, in terms of business, business zones and places where these things can go. When you draw fifteen hundred feet on a map, it's, you're going to see that you have essentially precluded these things from existing anywhere in town, which the Attorney General will never approve. So you've got to find a happy medium here that's going to pass muster at the state level. So keep that in mind.
So may I follow up a question, Paul? So maybe we explain, so in a way, if, if the zoning bylaw setting in a way, if so, preclude that kind of facility, why that cannot be done? So why Southborough has to have one? That's, that's what I'm not sure. By, is, per, per, by what? By which, which law? We, we are not sure, you know? Southborough don't have lots of things other towns may had, may have. So there's nothing putting us in a position in violating any laws. So because different town have their different identity, have their specific features, they are maybe better than anything. So we are equal, but we are not equal literally, you know? So we are not the same height. So you can say if you haven't reached six foot, you cannot be a citizen. So that, that's almost, I, I, I don't know, I cannot understand that kind of, Paul, if you can explain a little bit, if you know, because I don't understand. Thank you.
So this goes to the point of why we did this two years ago. When, when the referendum was first passed at the state level, a lot of, not a lot, but a significant number of towns immediately said, well, not in our town. We, you know, yep, the state passed it, but we are banning it. And they passed bylaws that said, we will not have a dispensary in blank town. All of those were invalidated by the Attorney General because theoretically three hundred fifty-one cities and towns could have done the same thing, which means the intent of the referendum would be completely obliterated. There would be no dispensaries in Massachusetts if all the towns did that. So if all the towns can't do it, no one town can do it either. So the Attorney General actually gave very specific guidance that said, an outright ban is never going to be accepted by any town, however special we think we are, and however special every other town might think they are, respectfully. A bylaw that is so restrictive that it is essentially a ban, same thing. So as, again, if you go out to fifteen hundred feet and it ends up being one parcel, you know, sandwiched between, you know, three other landlocked parcels as the only place in town you can do this, it's very, very likely the Attorney General will kick it back. I guess we could...
Yeah, if I may. So not dispute, just for entertaining. So our, our bylaw code already called for adult entertainment, for special permitting requires one thousand feet setback. So we are not intentionally or purposely to limit this facility. So therefore, it's more consistent to our code, rather than right now, we cut down that setback, seems like to encourage something, which is not in the same consistency as our bylaw. So, so from that, at this, I can see the thousand feet is consistent with our bylaw. We are not, so making this things a hardship. We are, again, so I'm here, I'm not really opposed specific industry law legally or lawfully approved by, by the state government. But we have to be responsible when we approve it to evaluate all the impact to our community. And that consequence, and that may cause to suffer for other economic aspect of, for the town, so as we, we know. So we don't want to discriminate another, by creating this, and discriminating another industry may coming in and not in, in a proper environment. Thank you.
Anastasia Smith, Warfare View. I just haven't heard anybody mention anything about the home delivery. That struck me as something that is really a wild card, it seems like to me. I mean, as far as having the drugs go into our town and into our homes, which is what generally we're opposed to, the home, you, you can see what would happen in the facility perhaps being controlled. But the home delivery seems like it's sort of a wild card. And we've talked about controlling hours. Is there any way that, that aspect of it, where you have maybe a delivery person that's working at a, at a minimum age that's not really concerned so much about who they're delivering to? You know, take this from, from this location to this location, they drop it off. How much are they policing who they're dropping it off to? Is it, you know, teens that just got home from school, or is it somebody who's ill, or is, you know, that kind of thing? Is that something, I don't mean, this may not be the place, but I'd like to have somebody think about the home delivery aspect. Thank you.
Just want to make sure we stay within the, the bounds of the public hearing, which is the distance, the thousand feet. Your question may be relative to the thousand feet and the hours of operation, but I just want to make sure that we don't start drifting into the merits of other things. Did you want to speak on that, Marnie?
Hi, Carrie Alpert, thirty-seven Clifford Road. I just, the, as far as the bylaws for the thousand feet, as it was shown in the slide and discussed before, we're not looking to increase it to anything that's even beyond surrounding towns. Like some towns have two thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet. We're just, it's just increasing it to a thousand, which is just for the residential area and the schools. And what was brought up at the ZBA, which I thought was an extremely valid point, just because the Attorney General has this blanket statement, and just because our town has approved it, if the site doesn't work, it's not our responsibility to find another site. If they, if they have researched and looked at different sites and they don't work, that's not our problem. Like if we have our feelings about this area, and we want to increase it to a thousand feet, or fifteen hundred, or two thousand, like a bunch of the other towns, like Marlboro and Sudbury, whatever their listing are, that's our right. But we don't have a responsibility to find them another site. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So I feel very almost, all these meetings that I'm attending, I feel almost like it's being really shoved at me, like I have a responsibility to find this site, but the town doesn't. We have a responsibility to do due process, but to a point. And I live around the corner from it, from the proposed site. So, and it has nothing to do with my beliefs, one way or the other. It's just, that really is the point. It's not, our, for feet, it's not even at where most other towns are even at. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? This is the point in the public hearing where we start to ask if anybody objects to, or where the board would start to consider closing the public hearing unless somebody had a reason to keep it open. So, last chance, otherwise there may be a motion to close the public hearing. Of course, this is on tape, so people will be able to watch it and, if they missed it, then they can get the full benefit on TV. Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, it might be worth explaining for people that haven't been through the process, that closing the public hearing cuts off all, all questions and comments, and opens up a discussion just among the board members. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. There were some questions that we weren't able to answer, but we don't necessarily have to answer them within the public hearing. We'll take them as homework and pass them on to the appropriate people, which I think in this case was Town, is Town Council, to help guide us relative to the effectiveness or the, the impact of the approval of these warrant articles or the, the non, non-approval of them. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that information so that when these articles are presented at the town meeting, those areas can be covered. Is that okay? Does that sound good? The other thing is, or another thing, is that the planning, like I said at the beginning, the Planning Board facilitates the public hearing for zoning articles. And we feel that as elected officials, we're, you know, responsible to take a vote and let the public know how we feel relative to the articles, and if necessary, the reasons why we feel that way, so that people can take that information and factor it into their informed decision as to how they feel like voting. But there's been situations where articles like this have been presented to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has voted five to zero against them. Even though we facilitated the public hearing, we were not in favor of. And then all other variations, all the way to five to zero in favor. So in this case, this is a citizens petition. We're learning, just like everyone else, about this, these articles, and based on what we've heard, we'll, we'll, at some point, take a vote. So if after we close the public hearing, I'll ask the board if they want to take a vote tonight. And if so, then we will. If not, we'll maybe take the vote next week or the night of the town meeting. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for Citizens Petition One to amend medical marijuana bylaw to change the distance from the schools, recreation facilities, or daycare centers. Will we do each one individually, or all in one?
I think the public hearing notice, I, I only read it once relative to the times. So because there's one, there was one public hearing notice, we can probably have one motion to close the public hearings.
Okay. And to also close the public hearing for Citizens Petition Number Two, to amend the medical marijuana bylaw, add sections which avoid the special permit under specified conditions, and also to close the public hearings for Citizens Petition, Petition Number Three, to amend the medical marijuana bylaw, add section two specified days and hours of operations.
Second?
And those were Articles thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine in the printed town warrant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Most has been made and seconded to close the public hearings. Any discussion? All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Anybody interested in voting tonight? I know we have three members here that attended the public hearing. We have one member who recused himself. We have another member who's out of town, and will be missing the next meeting, our next meeting, which is April fourth, and will have her last scheduled Planning Board meeting the night of the town meeting, because the, the, the next scheduled Planning Board meeting after that is after the election. And Mrs. Bartolini has, is not running for reelection. So right now, she's only scheduled for one more meeting, which would be the night of the town meeting. So we, we could wait until then to take our vote. We could, in which case she would be here, and then, or if we voted next week, Mr. Mills, you're not here? Is that right? So it may be, I, I think I would recommend that we, we, we take our vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to vote tonight? And if Ms. Bartolini was adamant that she wanted her voice heard, that we could take another vote with her opinion, or have her voice be heard at our meeting right before town meeting?
Sure.
I, I just...
Yeah, I think we could, we could reconsider the vote.
Not that I want to change anything, but I just think...
Giving her an opportunity.
Right. Having, being one member that's not consistently here on something like this, I know I'd want my voice heard. So I'm not opposed to taking the position tonight, and I know I'm going to stick with my position going forward. But just to be fair to Ms. Bartolini, I wouldn't want to feel that we're shutting her out.
Mr. Jenks?
I think that's a dangerous precedent.
To vote, or to...
To, to take an action with the understanding that at the next meeting, we may take a different action.
So let me put it this way, maybe not a different action, but at least that she could voice her opinion, whether or not, even though she wasn't here, to say, I know everyone else voted, this is my stance.
She can stand up at town meeting and do that.
Mr. Jenks? Do one at a time.
I get the feeling that I'm not as passionate about this issue as most people in the room. I watched the zoning hearing when they approved the special permit. I was impressed with the people who, I was impressed with the, the approach of the people who made their presentation. I think clearly they know their business. I don't have the security issues. I don't have kids in, in those schools. I have a couple of grandkids in those schools. And, and I discussed this, this afternoon with my advisors, that being my wife and my daughter. And I, and I, I won't tell you they share my view. But the bottom line is, I am an elected member of this board. You are the people who elected me. I think that I need to support the people who show up at the meeting, and therefore, I will vote in favor of the Planning Board recommending these three articles.
Mr. Mills?
So I can say, I've watched many of the, the meetings as well, starting with the meetings with the Selectmen, and the most recent zoning board of appeals meetings. Regardless of my feelings of marijuana in general, I think, you know, that there is a, a small subset, well, I don't know how big it is, there is a subset of the population that, that does need this. It was voted by the state... It was voted by the state to allow it, and even by this town to allow it. So, with that said, we are here to represent everybody. And when I look at, you know, everything that's been discussed and the way it's been worded and presented, I look at access. How do, if my wife really needed it, or I needed it, or, you know, someone in my family or my neighbor needed it, could they get it? And I went online, and I was surprised to see that there's actually an app that you can look at and will tell you if you can get it. And not only can you get it, there were three competing delivery services that you can get in touch with, and you can, you can get ahold of it. One of them is actually running a special right now for two ounces. It's not a joke. So, in my opinion, if you want it, there is access to it, or if you need it, not if you want it, but if you need it, and you have the rights forms and doctor's notes and everything else, you can get access. So, therefore, I think it, I was in favor of making it, having the larger buffer the first time, and I would be in favor of increasing that again, because I think we would have strong reason to be able to say that we are providing access, or there is access to those who need it. So I would be in favor of supporting the articles.
All three?
All three.
I agree. So, we've expressed our opinion, now we need a formal, we need a formal motion to recommend support. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend, or vote in favor, support of Article thirty-seven, Article thirty-eight, and Article thirty-nine of the three citizens petitions to amend the medical marijuana bylaw.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? However this vote goes, the next item on the agenda is the approval not required for two fifty-five Turnpike, and if you want to stick around for that, I'll try to explain so that we can understand what the next action is being requested of the planning board. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Three to zero. Congratulations, whatever. And thank you all for your input. The next item on the agenda is seven forty-five, approval not required, two fifty-five Turnpike Road perimeter plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a way to show the plan?
No. You have the plan in front of you. I didn't bring a presentation board.
Terry, will this show on the tabletop there? If not, we'll somehow put it on front of the podium, because it shows there, I know that. Just want people to see what it is. Better than, than nothing, I guess. If anybody at home wants to call in and say they can't see it, maybe we'll try to improve it. We do get call-ins once in a while. Okay. Good evening. You're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dan Merrican with Merrican Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. We've submitted an A&R plan for the board's endorsement. I think with the audience present, I'll just give a quick overview of what an A&R plan is, unless you'd rather do that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Oh, no. It's your plan.
So, the subdivision of land in the Commonwealth is regulated by the subdivision control law. And if you intend to subdivide a piece of property into more than one lots, or to create a road, you need subdivision approval from this board. If you are not creating more than two lots, and you're not creating any streets, you don't need subdivision approval. So there is a separate process called the approval not required process, where if an applicant believes that their plan does not require subdivision approval, the plan is presented to the board. If the board finds that it is not a subdivision, the board votes to endorse the fact that it is not a subdivision on the plan. This is not a permit. It is an administrative proceeding. It's simply a determination of whether or not the plan that's been presented is a subdivision or not. So we have submitted to you a plan of the existing property at two fifty-five Turnpike Road. This is what's called a perimeter plan. It's not a subdivision of any kind. The property on the, shown on the plan we submitted is the exact property that exists today. There is no division of any kind. We're not creating new lots. We're not creating new parcels. We're not changing the lot boundaries in any way, shape, or form. Under the, under master general law, since there is no division of land, it is not a subdivision. And therefore, there's a body of case law on this topic, and the courts have concluded that a planning board should endorse a perimeter plan as an approval not required.
Could you come to the table, hold the mic, and then put your fingers around the lines on the plan that shows the perimeter? And then, the plan also shows the building on the lot, and it also shows some distances. You don't have to read the distances, but just in case anybody... Go ahead.
Sure. So just describe the plan a little bit?
Yeah. Show Route nine, and then take it from there.
Want to hold it up? Okay. Here we go. So, on the plan, on the bottom of the plan is Turnpike Road, which is the frontage for the property and the access to the property. This property here, Lot seven, is the property line. This is the exact same property that is shown on a record plan endorsed by this board in nineteen sixty-eight. It was another A&R plan that created this lot and a series of other commercial lots along Route nine. And then we have shown the existing building with the setbacks from the building to the property boundaries. And that is it. The only, the other information on the plan are a series of notes that are required by the registry, a locus map, the names of all the butters, as they're shown on the assessors' records.
Thank you. If anyone wants to come up and take a look at the plan, we'll take a minute to let you take a look at it. The Planning Department, I read this at the last meeting or the meeting before that, rather, and it's entitled, it's from the Commonwealth of Mass, Department of Housing and Community Development. It's a, it's a publication, it says, "Grandfathered Lots and Plan Protections." And there's a section in here called "Perimeter Plans," which is what's before us now. "A perimeter plan is a plan of land showing existing property lines with no new lines drawn indicating a division of land, and is usually filed so that the property owner can obtain the three-year use freeze afforded approval not required plans." Open up to the board, Mr. Jenks.
Just for clear understanding of what that means, is the perimeter A&R, if approved and signed, endorsed by the planning board, freezes use zoning on that property, which means that no change in zoning for the next three years will affect that property as to its use. Dimensions might change, setbacks might change, but its, its use is, will be frozen for three years, which I assume is the purpose of that being in front of us.
That's correct.
You said that was created out of an A&R in sixty-six or some...
It's, the lot was created in nineteen sixty-eight by an A&R plan endorsed by this board.
Do you happen to have a copy of that A&R? Thank you. I remember reading something about if there were any special requirements on the original A&R, they had to be carried over to this. But it looks very clean.
There are no notes on there. There's just the standard approval under the subdivision control or not required notation.
I see it.
Mr. Mills.
So freezes the use for three years. But the actual use of the lot currently, since it isn't, we haven't done a site review for the coming purpose, it would not be freezing it yet?
Mr. Chairman, it freezes all uses permitted by right and special permit in the zoning bylaws the date the plan was filed with the board. So as of March eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, any use that's allowed by right or by special permit will be also allowed by right or by special permit on this property for the next three years.
So, Mr. Chairman, per the question earlier from the townspeople, knowing that if the new articles that are being proposed by the citizens' petition, if those were approved, and these, this was already, we signed these already, then that would, I assume, still allow the use of the property? Or that's something we need legal counsels? Unless someone else might know an answer to that?
I guess in the absence of other information, it would seem that way, that, that it would freeze it for three years. But, again, I think we took that as a homework assignment to be guided by the town council on all of these different aspects. Perimeter plan, the three proposed warrant articles, the date, the date of the special permit by the ZBA, the date of the submittal of the A&R. Factor all those in against the rules, and then we should be guided by that. But I, I think it would seem to me that, like any other A&R that's submitted before us, if it's in proper order, then we, we either take action on it and endorse it, or we let it lapse, and then it becomes, it becomes as if we did endorse it, but it would take thirty days?
The state statute is twenty-one days. Your local bylaw, your local regulation is fourteen.
And this was submitted...
It was submitted on March eleventh.
Friday morning.
Friday morning.
I'd be in favor of getting legal counsel's opinion and voting next week, or signing next week, based on his recommendation.
I think counsel's opinion is always helpful.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, if you have a meeting next week, that would be too late.
It would then be essentially...
Constructively approved. If the board fails to act within the requisite timeframe, it is constructively approved.
Yeah. Okay. I, I don't think this is much different than any other A&R that we had before us. So, I, I don't have a problem voting to endorse this plan tonight. But would certainly entertain another approach. Mr. Jenks. Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I understand the A&R procedure, we are bound to it. So my question is, is still the complications of the articles for the town meeting, as well as, so if our article submitted for, accepting for voting prior to the ZBA's voting on that special permit, I just feel there's some kind of legal issues there not cleared to be a foundation of this vote, and so therefore, we should, the board should consider that. So I believe the article was submitted March first for, for the town meeting, so which is prior to the voting on the ZBA's special meeting, close to that hearing to issue the permit. So, which have some gray area. I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent clear, but at this, I feel there's adequate information there we should consider. Or you have to have another special meeting to vote on it, or if you consult with the town council, it's up to the board, but, so it's just, I feel to be responsible for the whole situation for the community, we need a little time, or you need your wisdom to consider it. So, and I, so we trust you in that. Thank you.
Mr. Semino.
Mr. Chairman, you read, I wonder if you could read it again? When you read the specific language about the freeze that attaches here, the last few words of that were that A&R plans enjoy, or deserve, or get, or something like that. Can you, can you read it again and focus on the very end?
It says, "Perimeter plans." "A perimeter plan is a plan of land showing existing property lines," which this one does, "with no new lines drawn indicating a division of land, and is usually filed so that the property owner can obtain the three-year use freeze afforded approval not required plans."
So the words I couldn't quite remember are afforded approval not required plans. So whatever the use freeze is that A&R's are afforded would be in order here. I don't know what that is. I suspect nobody in this room knows exactly what that refers to. And I don't think it bears on whether you have a proper A&R in front of you, but it obviously bears on what the endorsement gets them. And it may be that it's completely irrelevant... And it may be that it's completely irrelevant, uh, but I, I, I noticed those words, and it may be very relevant.
Well, this document is not the, uh, the, uh, the law, the, the language of the law, or the code. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a paper that's, this outline gives limited information relative to zoning protections for lots and subdivision plans, and is intended only for informational and reference purposes. So-
So maybe that ought to be, uh, part of the, part of the request you make of, uh, town council in terms of his advice. Again, maybe, maybe it's meaningless.
There's a, uh, there's one note below what I just read, un, within the perimeter plans section, which is section C. It says perimeter plans are entitled to A N R endorsement, period. Then it refers to a court case. So entitled to an A N R endorsement. I mean, we know, we know what our, what the rules are relative to not endorsing a plan. The plant, the, the planning board can, can, uh, decide to not sign and let, let it, uh, be constructively approved by time. We know that. And rare that that happens, but we, we've had that happen.
I'm not suggesting you should, um, refuse to endorse if you believe it's proper. I'm only suggesting that the result of the endorsement may or may not be hidden in those words. So, so your job tonight is not really affected by those words. It's, it's the result of that that may be still an open question. That's all I'm saying.
Especially relative to all of the other moving parts, uh, the special permit, the filing dates, relative to each other, the warrant articles. Mr. Jenks.
Um, do we know the, uh, frontage requirement and the area requirement for those properties in the village district?
It's two hundred feet, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
It's not, it's what?
It is two hundred feet. The current frontage requirement. At the time the lot was created, it was different. It's a grandfathered lot.
Dan, Dan, what, what is the, uh, date that you consider, uh, the plan to be constructively approved?
I believe that would be, uh, under state law would be Monday. Well, maybe Friday, depending on how you count the first day. I always have to ask, ask an attorney that question, but it's in that territory. I think it's Friday.
Well, I happen to be the one that you submitted the plan to in the planning office, and that was-
Right, and it was a Friday morning.
Yeah, it was a Friday morning, but it was, um, uh-
So I think it would be the end of the day on Friday, which would be twenty-one days later, twenty-one calendar days later.
Uh, the, the planning department, actually the town hall, uh, end of the, the day on a Friday is noon.
Right.
And I think you guys submitted it, you certainly submitted it before noon time.
Yes.
But, um, it was not, uh, it was not logged in, uh, with the town clerk on that Friday. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not, you know, we're getting down into hours now.
We are.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, Mr. Jenks.
Um, Mr. Chairman, part of my suggestion that we talk to town council is, I don't know whether a grandfathered lot is entitled to A N R treatment, or if it does not meet the zoning requirement, um, is it not entitled to A N R treatment? And I'd like to get his opinion on that, because this would not make it as a A N R today.
Mr. Chairman, I could offer some thoughts on that topic.
Please.
So the, the, I think the question that you're going to is, when you, when you receive a normal A N R plan, which is a division of land, you're looking to verify that the newly created lots have frontage on a public way, and, and those different tests that are, are met in the statute. Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L defines a subdivision. The term subdivision shall mean the division of a tract of land into two or more lots, provided however that the division of a tract or of land into two or more lots shall not be deemed to constitute a subdivision, and I'm skipping some words here, if every lot within the tract so divided has frontage on a public way. So it's a twofold test. One is a subdivision, the first test is a subdivision is a division of a tract of land. If you get beyond that test and you're into two or more lots, if you get beyond that test and you're creating two or more lots, now you have to determine that each lot has frontage on a public way.
I, I think you're leaving something out. It's proper zoning frontage.
Well, I'm, I have a copy, if you would like to see it. Uh, and I'm just telling you that because there is no division of land, by definition under the statute, it's not a subdivision.
I agree with that. That isn't my issue.
Okay.
Um, you're, you seem to be arguing that if it had five feet of frontage, it would be entitled to an A N R?
As an existing perimeter plan, it, it would be, under the case law.
Totally not. I totally disagree with that.
Well, again, if you're not dividing the land into two or more lots, it cannot be defined as a subdivision.
Agreed.
So the only way that you can not endorse the plan is if you conclude it's a subdivision. If you conclude it's not a subdivision, eighty-one, give me a half a second here.
No, there are conditions on that. One of them is proper zoned frontage. The other is the area of the lot meets the current zoning. And the third one, which is a little bit harder to define, is it has to have, um, adequate access for emergency vehicles. Those are the three requirements.
Just so you can see what I'm referring to as I read through it. This is eighty-one L. Okay, and I'm, I'm just reading the, this is the state definition of a subdivision, right? It's the first sentence.
This is not a subdivision. We've agreed on that.
Okay, so moving on, then, uh, under eighty-one P, it says, if the board finds that the plan does not require such approval, meaning subdivision approval, it shall forthwith, without a public hearing, endorse thereon, or cause to be endorsed thereon by a person authorized by it, the words approval under the subdivision control are not required, such endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision. Now that's eighty-one P, and I have copies of that if you'd like it as well. So, you know, you go through the test of, what, is it a subdivision? So is there a division of land? If the answer is no, it's not a subdivision. If the answer is yes, you have to then move on to the test of if it's two or more lots, do they have frontage on a public way?
Any frontage?
Any frontage.
A foot?
But that doesn't apply here, because there's no division into two or more lots.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think we need, uh, legal counsel to weigh in.
The next time the planning board could meet would be, um, Thursday. We'd have to post the meeting some point tomorrow.
I can't come back here.
And then, um, meet on Thursday, which according to you, Dan, is within the, the-
Under the state law, Mr. Chairman, your local regulation says fourteen days, which have already lapsed.
Right.
So there is a question on that topic.
We've, we've been through, we've been through that before with other submittals, and, um, the fourteen days, uh, has not, uh, to my knowledge, been upheld.
That's why I say it's an open question. The state law is twenty-one days.
Right.
Which would be three weeks to the day from Friday, the day it was submitted, March eleventh.
So if we met Thursday, we would, we would be able to sign the A N R. It would not be constructively approved on, by this Thursday.
I believe that's correct.
We have to meet in a meeting? Or we just, we get the answers and?
Well, it requires a vote of the board, so I think you have to have a convened meeting.
I think you're right. I think, I, I, I'm quite sure that we would have to, uh, deliberate, we'd, we'd get information from, uh, guidance from council, look at it, and then deliberate, and then take a vote.
I can do it on Thursday.
You do, uh, these in other towns?
Many, many times, Mr. Chairman.
Before other planning boards?
Yes.
Do the other planning boards have as many meetings as we do?
Nobody has as many meetings as we.
Unfortunately, lots of boards have lots of meetings.
Yeah, we inserted this meeting.
Right, because you just met last week, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Next week, the week after.
It's a busy month for you.
We've actually met more frequently over time, so having two or three meetings in a week is, um, something that we don't always do, but we've done it. And, um, since the board members are willing, uh, to do that, we'll give it a try.
Okay.
So what we'll do is take no action on the A N R tonight. Tomorrow morning, we will, uh, try to, uh, ask town council, who at this time of the year, two weeks before town meeting, has nothing to do. And we'll ask him to help us with this and guide us. And if we're able to get that, um, or at least a commitment for that, um, then we'll post a, a meeting for Thursday, seven, seven P M. Does that work for you guys?
That works for us, Mr. Chairman.
Dan will be here.
Um, but if we don't get, uh, any more guidance than what we have here tonight, we still may meet and make a decision to either sign or not.
I understand.
Or we may decide not to meet and let it be constructively approved, in which case we would notify you and put it on the town website, uh, so that the neighbors wouldn't come here for, uh, an empty room.
Very good.
So, I mean, that decision to not meet, even though it may be posted, that decision may not be made until Thursday.
Understood.
So, but we'll try to accommodate, you know, everyone's, uh, you know, have some respect for your, your time, and, and try to, uh, plan this out so that we know what we're doing, and, and others can attend if they want, and then, or not attend, not waste anybody's time. Is that what we want to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on this one? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time.
And thank you.
Thank you.
is the planner's report, approval of minutes. We have discussion of the citizens petition, medical marijuana, we've already done that one. And then, um, what we probably discuss the update on the, uh, recent meeting with the Z B A relative to, um, Park Central waiver requests. Um, I, uh, on the, um, the, um, minutes, during one of my trips here today and going over, uh, the status of the minutes with the, uh, planning department, um, there's still an issue of getting the, um, approved minutes on the website, and it has to do with, uh, uh, rights to go in and, and, uh, put things on the server and, uh, on the website. Which is what we said last meeting, last week, and, so I was a little bit surprised that there hadn't been apparently any movement in that direction. So I went and I spoke with the, uh, with the town clerk, because I believe the initial authority, or authorities, uh, relative to the, um, the website are there. And, uh, the town clerk assured me that he'd look into it in the morning and try to, um, you know, get some movement relative to, um, our minutes getting, uh, put onto the And I asked if, uh, if the other departments, other boards and committees were having a problem getting their minutes onto the website, and that's going to be part of the, uh, discussion tomorrow, uh, on that. I didn't really get a, a clear answer. I hope they're able to. I think it's limited to just, um, our, uh, minutes. So in our packet, we have minutes for February twenty-ninth. Only two of the members are here for that one. And what were the other ones? That was it. So since we will probably be meeting on Thursday, we'll put that on the agenda to try to, uh, get up, up to date and, uh, get these minutes in a, they're not, they're not that late, but they're, they're later than what we would, would want, getting them approved and on, onto the, uh, the website for the people to see.
Will Jesse be able to join us on Thursday? In terms of signing the A N R, since you refused? Okay, so then we could actually do the minutes. That was my question.
Yeah, no, Jesse can, can participate with the A N R.
Good.
Because that's not a public hearing. Part of the planner's report would be the, um, status of, uh, the upcoming meetings. Our next meeting, uh, having talked about that for Thursday, would, it would be, if it's posted, would be to do the A N R for, um, two fifty-five turnpike. There's, there'll be nothing else on that agenda other than, uh, other business properly before the board, which, which would include the me, the meeting minutes. Um, the next meeting after that, which is next Monday, uh, April fourth, is a continued public hearing for the Saint Mark's School Solar Energy Array. Now, uh, they have, Saint Mark's has, uh, sent an email, which I received, um, and I think others received, scheduling the, the sidewalk for the balloon test for this Saturday, uh, ten thirty to one, is it, Phil? Eleven-ish? Is that a time? I talked, I talked with Hillary, that was one of the last things that we talked about today, and it was like a little after five. So I asked her to make sure that everyone got it on the, on the board. And I believe the neighbors, I think St. Mark's did a good job of notifying the neighbors about that. But that's one of the things that we'll check on tomorrow to make sure. So that, that St. Mark's Solar, the visual will be, will be on Saturday, the visual inspection from Sears Road.
Is it, so it's going to be the visual, visual from Sears Road? And then any plans to go in and actually walk the property and look from on the property out?
We can. I, the email said that the gate would be open, people from St. Mark's, and the solar people will be there. And, you know, stated that the, the site, the site would be available for us to inspect.
So I think, Mr. Chairman, you and I discussed in a conversation, a private conversation, I actually walked the property a couple of weeks ago with my dog, it was normal, on a leash. So he did not go on the fields.
In your little plastic bag?
Absolutely, absolutely. But, and it was clearly, I don't know if you've been up there, Phil, or not, but it was clearly marked where the area is with four-foot-high stakes, I think with orange markers on the top in terms of the boundaries where they're thinking. While I didn't have a ladder with me, I did climb on some boulders and some fallen trees to elevate myself to as close to ten feet high as I could to see, you know, without any leaves on a lot of the trees, what I could see for, in the direction of Sears Road. I, I could see one roof line. I couldn't see any windows, I, or yards. So I, for me, just doing that, I mean, this next time, I might bring a step ladder with me and try to get a little higher. But, and, and I also went not, because that property definitely rounds a bit. And I was stayed at what I thought was the peak to where I could see towards Sears Road. And I did it varying points as I went up to the northernmost point. But, you know, I'm happy to do it again. If I bring a ladder, I, I think I'm going to have to leave the dog behind this time.
I think the, I think St. Mark's didn't limit it to homo sapiens.
Well, they've been very generous not to limit it to homo sapiens in the past. So it's, it's a great walking trail.
Another point, talking to Hillary again today. Again, we talked earlier tonight about the availability of the planning board members. There is no special permit required for the St. Mark's array because of the, and I forget the name of the rule that allows, that the ZBA grant, agreed.
The Dover Amendment.
Dover Amendment, relative to educational purposes. So it's a site plan approval, which would be handled by a minimum of fi, uh, three of the five planning board members. So the absence of Mrs. Bartolini from the continued public hearing.
She won't be there either, one day.
Right. So my discussion with Hillary was that it may be, I wanted to make sure that she had informed, and I, and she did. She had a brief discussion with St., the attorney that, that appears here, Mr. Fock, relative to planning board members' availability, you know, during the next couple of weeks, even month, because of the upcoming election and so on. And giving them an opportunity to decide if they want to continue to press on or to continue without any action until we get another member. So that, that was a little bit of a discussion today. We'll see how that, that unfolds.
So when you say no special permit, are you including lower impact development?
Believe so.
And the Dover Amendment relieves them of...
No, I guess, I guess it's not the lower impact development. Oh, maybe. Yeah, I, I'd have to look into that, Phil. I, I know that there was discussion about not, not being concerned about just having four members or even three members. Have to look into that.
I believe they had that concern once before.
Yeah. So the other item... This is still in progress, but I, at the last ZBA meeting, which was on March twenty-fourth, I attended that and along with the, the chairman of the Conservation Commission was also there. I was just there to watch and I wound up speaking. If you've, if you watched the actions of the, the ZBA, they, they were asked to, I guess, change or rescind their vote to waive the conservation sections of the code that the ZBA wa, waived in a previous meeting. And they decided not to and let it stand. At the previous meetings, they had discussed but not voted on the planning board's jurisdiction over the lower impact development, one seventy-four dash thirteen point three. And decided that they would vote. I asked them not to because it was a significant zoning requirement. And it really had a, a great impact on the ability to, you know, manage the land and the impact on the environment. And they considered it, but they decided to press on and they voted to waive that requirement, along with several others in the zoning code that night. So as a result of that, I think it was that night or the next day, the Conservation Commission submitted a letter to the, I thought I had it here, to the, do you have it? To the Board of Selectmen.
It was in the, I, I think it was at our, here today.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not it. I have those. Well, anyways, there was a letter and I believe one of, this is March twenty-first.
Is that the one?
This is where the, the March twenty-first Conservation Commission lettered, asked, respectfully asked that the ZBA reconsider and rescind their vote relative to chapter one seventy-four dash thirteen point five and also chapter one seventy. And, and, and the ZBA considered that a couple of days later, on March twenty-fourth, and decided to press on and not grant the commission's request to reconsider. And then, right after that, Conservation submitted a, a letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting, I believe they, they requested special counsel, permission to get special counsel. Do you have that? Legal opinion request form? Yeah, that's it. Thanks. Oh, okay, that's, um... Okay. So I'm just stumbling along here, trying to update you from my attendance at the meeting and also things that I'm somewhat aware of that's happened since then.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I watched some of that meeting. I wasn't there in person. But the way it appeared to me, the way the applicant was talking, they, if I interpreted correctly, they implied that they were planning to come before us eventually. But if they've already got all the waivers, what would the point be?
I believe they stated that if the planning, if, when they submitted the site plan to the planning board, it would be giving the planning board the opportunity to review the site plan as we normally would. And if we had valid comments, that they would consider them in front of the ZBA. That's a huge difference between what's, a, a normal site plan would be, which is that, that they have to go beyond considering them. They have to
Take action.
Work with the, with the site plan approval authority and the lower impact development authority, which is the planning board, to resolve that. And if things aren't resolved, then the board, planning board would, in most cases, vote to approve with conditions, and those conditions would be things that the planning board felt were, were necessary and that the proponent might not necessarily agree with. And then, of course, there's the appeal process, which would be to the ZBA. Under the, all of these waivers, that's apparently not the, the way the process will go.
And Fussin O'Neill is not involved at this point at all. Is that correct?
Not for us.
Not for the planning board, right.
Or, or the things that have been waived.
You mean as far as Fussin O'Neill commenting on whether or not they should be waived?
Or if they are waived and then they come before us, then we, would we be engaging Fussin O'Neill in our, say, our regular review? I think the answer is no. Because they wouldn't be paying for it. Is that correct?
No, I th, I think that, I think that Fussin O'Neill could be called in to review whatever plans are submitted as a site plan. It's just the, the planning board's authority or lack thereof, as a result of the waivers, that would, could change the outcome. I know one of the concerns that the planning board would have, or has, would be that by waiving essentially all of the, most of the zoning regulations, is that you're going to wind, we're going to wind up, and, and when they went through the, the reasons for waiving these things, for example, the distance between driveways is, is smaller. It's a smaller distance than, than we require. The length of a straightaway on a road is longer than our code requires. The grades on some of these common driveways and roadway sections is different, is, is, not, not in compliance with the code. And you start adding up all of these things and you wind up with a significant length of roadway and driveways and intersections that don't meet the code. And then the comment, I believe, or the comments were that, well, this is a private road and so the town doesn't need to be that concerned about it. But what we've seen over the years with the, with certain subdivisions is that, and this was probably quite a while ago because it's changed since then, is that the developer will say that, oh, it's a pri, it's going to be a private road and we don't have to build it to town standards. It gets built to, not to town standards. The new people move in, the road is substandard, it's all, you know, not, not built to the town standards, it's falling apart. And so the people that live on the road, they put forth a petition to have the road accepted at the town meeting. And sometimes that, that gets approved because we're all neighbors and we feel that if there's a problem and the developer doesn't address it, that they're, the people paying taxes and therefore the town, I guess, will, will, you know, just pick it up and, and try to make it right. Well, in this case, you've got what's going to be about ten, ten percent of the town's population living on this ro, on this road network. And so it'd be very easy for them, after it's all built, not to the town standards, to put forth an article, to have the, the whole roadway network turn into a town road. And then go to the town meeting and, and have enough people there to, to pass it. And there you go. We wind up with, the town winds up with a substandard road that we have to live with for many, many decades. And this is the type of thing that the planning board thinks of. And I'm not sure if that's been contemplated in, in the waiving of all of this.
I watched the video from that meeting and it seemed to me that there was very little discussion about why the developer wanted or needed different waivers. And at least in one case, there was absolutely no discussion. The developer asked for the waiver by section of the zoning code and the zoning board made a motion to grant the waiver and granted the waiver. So I don't think that Fussin O'Neill has looked at this at all. The ZBA chair said that, at one point, that all the correspondence received by the zoning board for the last couple of weeks hasn't, has been passed on to the planning board. That's this packet, I assume. And it goes back to February fifteenth, I think, was the oldest there. And I find nothing in here from Fussin O'Neill. So I don't know what their role is at this point. I would have hoped that they would look at the waivers. On the other hand, I was not aware until the other night that we use Fussin O'Neill as a advisor on compliance with the zoning bylaws. I thought we used them strictly as a engineering consultant. So it may be that they're not in that role for the zoning board. Maybe it is that they are just doing the engineering work. But in any case, it seems to me that waivers were granted with very little discussion. And I'd also point out that the chair announced that if we have, we, the planning board, and also for the Conservation Commission, had any issues with any of the items they have waived, we can come back to the zoning board and ask them to reconsider that waiver. So in effect, what I think they've done is made all of these waivers conditional, conditional waivers. I'm not sure what the impact of that is either.
This packet that we have with the rubber band around it was collected by Hillary as a result of going into... as a result of going into the, with permission to go into the ZBA files to cross-check what we had, or what she thought we had versus what the ZBA had. So I believe these must be at least a dozen or 15 separate pieces of correspondence were culled out of the ZBA files and identified, I could have this wrong, as not being given to the planning board or maybe anyone else, despite promises over the last year that when information came in, it would be shared. So I want to spend a little bit more time on this with Hillary to make sure that we identify those documents that we had to go and get rather than those that were given to us. So this is, this is an ongoing concern, but this is, this is the packet that we have. I invite ourselves to take a look through it to make sure that if we had received these items before, that they're not identified as things that we had to go get. Was there anything else, gentlemen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to personally thank you for all you've been doing without a town planner. I know you've put in countless hours, almost filling in as the town planner, in preparations for these meetings and everything else. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for all you've been doing, and I appreciate your dedication to the position.
On that note, I can tell you that I received four new resumes for the planner's job today. So we've got a little bit of life in that again.
That's good news. As far as Mr. Mills' comments, I am not the town planner, not the acting town planner. I am not qualified to be the town planner. I come in almost every day to cross-check with Hillary. Hillary's the one that's keeping, she's the glue that's keeping this thing together. As you know, we have an intern lined up to perform some of the duties, or some of the research and the hours and hours of, you know, reading and looking into things that the town planner or Hillary normally do, that I think the intern can keep things moving in that direction. We have the funding for that, and he, the intern, may be starting as soon as, later this week. We also have, Hillary will be gone for three weeks in May, end of May and into June. So at the time that the former town planner left, we thought that that would be a timeframe when we would have a new town planner, and there'd be, you know, no gap. But, or at least there'd be somebody in the, in the planning department every day. So if we don't have a town planner by that time, at least we will have an experienced intern, who I met with today and had that discussion with him and with Hillary. So I think that, and then there's also an opportunity for us to get a more experienced or more, you know, more qualified person relative to a town planner position to fill in and help with the intern during those weeks. But it's, it's after, it will be after town meeting, and I still feel that, I'm very pleased with the way things keep moving, despite, I mean, it just seems like everything we look at now, every submittal we have, requires some type of legal analysis. And it's not just on its own face value, but it seems to be all interconnected with other things, where we need, where we need, you know, legal help. So it makes it more difficult, a lot more time-consuming. But I still think things are moving forward properly, and with Hillary and the intern, and hopefully if I can keep, keep coming in periodically. And I know, I know, I hear from Hillary that all of you, other planning board members, are moving along in your assignments, behind the scenes relative to open space and budget things and all that other stuff that we do. So hopefully we'll get through this and keep things moving.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.